So, welcome everyone to the District Two Democratic County Council Forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters Baltimore County and the Randalls Town NAACP. My name is Erica McDonald, co-president of the League of Women Voters of Baltimore County. We are pleased to present this opportunity for the voters of Baltimore County to meet the candidates and to hear what they have to say about important issues facing our county. The League and the NAACP are nonprofit, nonpartisan political organizations. Neither organization supports nor opposes candidates for public office and both do not support political parties. The League's mission is to encourage informed and active participation in government, works, working to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influencing public policy through education and advocacy. The NAACP seeks to assure that African Americans as well as all citizens participate in our democracy as active and informed voters. A few housekeeping details before we begin. The forum this evening is a webinar, which means that the audience members can submit questions to the hosts in the chat but cannot pose questions verbally or enable their video. During the forum, the candidates will respond to questions, but this is not a debate and time will not be provided for candidates to rebut each other's responses. Questions will not be specific to any candidate. Civility is expected and candidates who behave disrespectfully such as talking over other candidates will be warned and may be muted or moved from the forum. Please note that there is no unauthorized recordings of this forum as the content is the property of the League of Women Voters of Baltimore County and the Randalls Town NAACP and may not be used without permission. A recording will be available after the forum on the League of Women Voters website. And with that, we are ready to begin our forum. Diane Ashton Brenner will be our timekeeper this evening. I will be the question facilitator and our moderator tonight is Nielsen Andrews, who is an elected member of the League of Women Voters of Baltimore County Board. And with that, give me just one moment to change the view here. Just a second, and I'll hand it over to Nielsen. Thank you.
The Baltimore County Council is the elected legislative body and it is invested with all lawmaking power granted to the county charter and by the General Assembly of Maryland. Tonight, we will hear from Democratic candidates for county council in District Two, Anthony Fugit and Izzy Patoka. The candidates will each make a two-minute opening statement as well as a two-minute closing statement after the question-answer period. The order of the opening statements was determined by the alphabetical order of their last names. The closing statement will be in the reverse order from the opening statement. The timekeeper will give a 30-second verbal warning and announce when the allotted time is up. After the closing statements, each of the candidates will have the opportunity to respond to the questions. Candidates will not be allowed to give rebuttals. We will begin with questions developed by the League of Women Voters and the Randalls Town NAACP, followed by questions from the audience. We invite you to submit your questions via the chat where they will be collected, embedded, and passed to the moderator. Questions sent to the forum email before the forum have been collected but will not be monitored during the forum. Our screener will review questions for repetition and choose for variety. We may not have time to address all questions submitted by the audience. Candidates will have two minutes to respond to the questions and time limits will be strictly enforced. The timekeeper will alert the speaker when they have 30 seconds left and when time is up, at which time the speaker must stop speaking within 10 seconds. Our goal is to end at 8:00 PM and appreciate everyone's help in achieving this goal. We will now have the two-minute opening statement from each candidate. Mr. Fugit, you will go first.
Good evening.
Just give me one second to spotlight you. I apologize. All right. Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you to the League of Women Voters Baltimore County and the Randalls Town branch of the NAACP for hosting this meaningful event this evening to talk about the election that's coming up in the new second councilmatic district. And I say new for a reason in that the county recently went through a redistricting effort and the makeup of this district, no one's ever voted in this makeup before. So, this is a new opportunity to elect a candidate in the second district. The redistricting effort was a challenging process that the county went through and it turned out that the county presented a map that was not constitutionally sound and they were taken to court and the map was challenged and the map was changed. So, the makeup of the district has changed from what it was in their original map. The map currently represents there are 40% African American and 45% white people that make up the district. So, in the second district, we deserve a leader who is fair and equitable and reflects the values of our district and does not cater to any special interest group. They should have a keen understanding of all of the issues as they relate to the county.
30 seconds.
And I am that individual and I will be talking more about what I'll be working for and how I will be working for you later in this presentation. Thank you very much. Nielsen, I think you're on mute.
Mr. Patoka, go ahead.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters and to the Randalls Town branch of the NAACP for hosting the candidates forum this evening. I believe that I'm well-qualified for this position. I'm currently the council member for the second district of Baltimore County. I've been community-centered my entire life. I'm local. I grew up in Lockhart. I attended Woodlawn High School and I earned my master's degree and my bachelor's degree at Towson University, both in geography and environmental planning. I'm trained as an urban and county planner by profession and so land use is my specialty, an essential function of being a council member. But also, I understand budgeting as I was the principal author of Baltimore City's $3 billion capital budget and also the principal author of Baltimore County's $3 billion capital budget when I was chief of capital budgeting for Baltimore City and for the county. I believe in improving the nuts and bolts of government, which is why I serve on Baltimore County's Code Enforcement Work Group, the Solid Waste Work Group, and the Work Group on Affordable Housing. As a council member, we work on numerous pieces of legislation. Two pieces of legislation that I'm particularly proud of that I accomplished in my first year. First, we passed legislation to require developers to pay impact fees to offset the impact of their developments so that the taxpayers will not be burdened with these costs. I've always believed that development must be done with respect to the community.
30 seconds.
To the environment and with respect to Main Street. Another piece of legislation that I'm pretty particularly proud of is to move work sessions into the evening from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM. The goal is to get it to 6:00 PM. We're successful at 4:00 and maybe getting it to 6:00 PM will be a second-term initiative. Thank you for giving me a few moments to speak and I look forward to a healthy dialogue this evening.
All right. We will now move to the questions. And the first question is, Mr. Patoka, you will go first. How have your skills and experience prepared you for the duties of the county council?
Great question. Basically, there are five functions of being a county council member. One is we're a legislative body. Like most legislative bodies, we make laws, we tweak laws, we review budgets, we review contracts similar to the Board of Public Works and the Board of Estimates at the city and state level respectively. We have broad land use authority. We do constituent services and I will say my office does constituent services particularly well. We're also an advocate for our respective districts. So, I've been trying to bring resources to the second district and I think I mentioned my land use skills and my budgeting skills. Like I said, we're very strong on constituent services and we passed some pretty good legislation over the past few years. So, serving, you know, my lens is from serving over three years as a council member and also bringing skills that I think that will afford me a strong second term. Thank you.
Mr. Fugit?
Could you repeat the question, please?
Yes. The question is, how do your skills and experience prepare you for the duties of the council?
Okay. I bring to the table over 40 years of experience in working with the community as a community advocate. As past president of Baltimore County NAACP, I've worked on many numerous county issues as it relates to housing, police accountability, education, just to name a few. And I understand clearly how the government works. In my current position, I've also introduced legislation at the state level and I'm assuming that it would be very similar at the local level. I've had that responsibility. I've also had a number of business experiences over the years that I think will bring to the party in terms of my leadership capabilities and my leadership experience. I've always been a leader in the community and working with a number of different issues. And it's very important, we're at a very important time in this county where we really have to look at some serious issues as they relate to our county going forward. And I believe that I'm best qualified to look at those with my general management experience and to work with the community. I've always been open door in terms of how I work with people and that I will do going forward as a council person and I believe that I'm the best person to represent the second district going forward.
All right. The next question, Mr. Fugit, you will go first. What are your priorities for the Baltimore County budget? Given that the county will receive increased funding from local, state, and federal sources, what would be your spending priorities? Are there any particular areas of the county that you see as priority for these funds?
Well, the largest portion of the budget is spent on education and clearly, education of our students is the most important task that we have as a county is to make sure that we have the best for our students. So, the priority for me would be the spending for education. The other thing would be for economic development programs and redevelopment efforts that need to happen in the second district. I believe that those dollars could be well-spent in terms of working with that. We also have to look at law enforcement in terms of how the police department operates and make sure that we have the correct number of personnel that would support our Baltimore County Police Department. So, it's education, community development, and then the policing, which would be the priority areas that I would consider for the budget.
Mr. Patoka?
Sure. Thank you for the question. And 51% of the budget does go to the Board of Education. And so, with the remainder, 49%, we've got to do all of the other things that government is responsible for doing. And what I'd like to focus on with that other 49% is our inner Beltway communities, the Liberty Road Corridor, the Reiser Sound Road Corridor. And if you look at track record, three years ago, we didn't have two dimes to run, to rub together for the Pikesville Armory. Now, we've got 8.8 million. I hope to do the same for the Liberty Road Corridor. In fact, I know I'll do the same because our inner Beltway neighborhoods have been neglected over the past, I don't know, 10 to 15 years. So, that's a real important priority for me. Open space is a huge priority. If you look at track record again, look at the neighborhoods Villanova, Paul's Crossing, Willow Glen South, and Williamsburg. They fought, and I fought along with them, to create open space at Paul's Farm and we ended up purchasing about three acres that's going to add vitality and housing values to an inner Belt, to four inner Beltway neighborhoods. That's important to me and certainly, economic development. I'm not sure that the Department of Economic and Workforce Development has stepped foot inside the Beltway. They will in the second district in the second term if I'm lucky enough to be reelected.
All right. Mr. Patoka, you will go first on this one. What do you see as the major educational issues in the county? How will you use your budgetary influence on the county budget to address these issues?
So, right now, we are more flush in terms of having resources than we have been in the last 20 years. The state has a significant surplus, the county has a significant surplus. So, in terms of how do we make major improvements to schools? Well, we begin to look at classroom size and we begin to look at an adequate public facilities ordinance that makes sense. So, we're not jamming 115% of students into a classroom that is only supposed to accommodate 100%. And in the next, the next school district over also has 115%. So, I think we should start to take a serious look at the adequate public facilities ordinance recommendations by the task force and begin implementing with the goal of reducing classroom size. And also, we've added through the Blueprint for Maryland's Future and also the Built to Learn Act, we've added enormous resources both on the Capitol side through the blueprint and then, I'm sorry, through Built to Learn and through the blueprint, we've added tremendous resources for educators, not only teachers, but everybody involved in the education system. And so, I think like no other time.
30 seconds.
We have the resources to do the right thing in our schools. And I'm pleased to see that my partner for several years on school issues, Cheryl Pastore, who's running for delegate, is in the audience and she has always been sound counsel to me on school board issues. Thank you.
The achievement gap is real in Baltimore County and needs to be addressed. And believe it or not, with the pandemic, it's increased even more. And that takes special resources that you have to bring to the schools that are in our district that, to address the achievement gap issue. The other thing that we need to look at is the curriculum that's being utilized. The curriculum in the school system today is outdated, nine years old, and our board just voted so that they would keep the current curriculum for another 18 months. And that's problematic in that it doesn't meet COMAR and it doesn't meet the standards for what education should be in the system. So, if we're going to really attack the achievement gap and if we're really going to do the right thing for the minority students in the system, then we need to bring the resources to it. We talked about the capital budget. They did really good in other parts of the county, but in the western side of the county, I think it got neglected in the last go-around for the capital budget in terms of improvements and things that could be done in the schools on the west side of the county. And we need to continue to work to improve what the schools look like in the structure. We need to look at how children are getting to school, the busing, and what we can do to address that and be flexible in terms of how we're getting children to and from school every day. And the other thing we need to do is we need to look at safety in our schools because I'm hearing from constituents across the county that are concerned about the public safety in schools.
30 seconds.
And for students. So, safety is also a matter where we need to look at the right resources, the right people to make sure that it's a safe environment for all of our students and teachers. Thank you.
The next question is, what would be your plan to address violence and crime in the county? Mr. Fugit, you go first.
You know, I've, I understand the dynamics of the police department and community relations and I'm hawkish on crime, meaning there's no place for crime in Baltimore County. And I believe that we need to continue to enforce all of the laws that are in place because we don't want the city, if you would, creeping into the county with crime. And that is something that's on the rise and I think that that's a matter that the department needs to look at and they need to see what they can do to address the crime that is increasing in the county. We need to make sure that they have the appropriate amount of funds that are available to do policing and that they have the right technology in place to do what need be done. But they also need to be accountable to the community and to the citizens. And I think that they should work more with the community and with the citizens to make sure that there are safe programs, safe streets, and things like that that are in place that will help us, our county be, if you would, crime-free. Thank you.
Mr. Patoka?
Thank you. So, there's four areas I'd like to address in this question. One is the great resignation has impacted the police department as it has many other professions. And so, with that, we've had many, many of the top-level police officers and command staff retire, resign, and so, that's created a shortage of police officers on the street because there are promotions that are made. So, we need to hire and retain more police officers and we need to train them well. We have, Baltimore County is really lucky to have a strong network of police community relations council. So, there's this natural entity for police and community to work together. We also, last year, passed the SMART, I'm sorry, the SMART Act, which is Strengthening Modernization Accountability and Reform and Transparency Police Act. And we're also establishing a police accountability board. And I think with appropriate training that we will have a very strong police accounting, accountability board. And I'll tell you, my public safety agenda also includes vehicular safety and pedestrian safety, which is unfortunately on the rise. And so, we need to look at our drivers, we need to partner enforcement with traffic safety mechanisms, and we also have to have pedestrian-friendly streets. And all of that is part of my public safety agenda. Thank you.
Well, this is another police question. Mr. Patoka, you will go first to this time. How will you work to support transparency and community trust in managing the police accountability board? What guidelines would you use to select members of the police accountability board?
Well, I think we're already in process with a police accountability board and I think we need to have it represent the broad community. I passed a resolution a year and a half ago, perhaps two years ago, to have a larger work group on equitable policing and that it be represented by younger people in our community. And in that resolution, it indicated that there would be one person on the work group on equitable policing that was between the ages of 18 and 25 and they would help shape our guidelines for the way we police. I think that in concert with the Strengthening Modernization Accountability Reform and Transparency Policing Act, along with the police accountability board, which will have a charging committee and that charging committee will have certain authorities. It needs to, we need to have confidence in it, we as a community. And I think if we do it right, we can gain confidence similarly to what we've done with our police community relations council. If you go to a police community relations council meeting in Baltimore City, it's very different than going to a police community relations council meeting in Baltimore County.
30 seconds.
And so, I think that we've got mechanisms in place and mechanisms that will be in place come July 1 with the police accountability board and hopefully, we'll have a stronger level of confidence with police and community and transparency as well. Thank you.
Mr. Fugit?
The police accountability board was an opportunity for our county council to step up and do the right thing. And yet again, they failed us in terms of how they structured and put together the police accountability board. Because what they do is they put together organizations that look good and they sound good on paper, but at the end of the day, they really don't have authority to do anything. And the community was pleading with the council to put authority and to give them some teeth to have a different attorney so that it wouldn't be the county attorney and that it would be more beneficial and it would be believable that it would do something if they were doing charges and whatnot because it would be, in effect, an independent organization. But our council decided to yield to the paternal order of police and to come up with something that's really soft and that really isn't meaningful. So, when I'm elected, what I would want to do is to put some teeth in the organization and make it an independent organization and make it stand up because that's really what the community is asking for and what I believe our community deserves. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Fugit, you will go first. The question is, how would you work to increase the availability of jobs with a living wage and reduce the cost of living?
The jobs today are plentiful, I believe, and that, I know that in my organization, we're having trouble hiring people today. I think that what we need to do is work with job training and get, make sure that people have the critical skills coming out of school to go into these positions because they clearly are out there and they're available and that they pay very good wages. So, it's really training and getting people back to work. The other thing that we have to consider is, given the pandemic, that we're going to be working differently now. So, it's going to be tunnel-working and it's going to be working with, from home, if you would. And that's going to be important down the road in terms of being able to get people back to work. Young families are struggling. I think that one of the things that they have to consider is childcare. Childcare is very, very expensive. I think that we need to look at ways that we can assist families that are trying to go back to work and how that they can do the childcare and support their families. And the cost of living, inflation with the cost of gas, hopefully, the gas tax gets reduced. It's, you know, we're going into a recession, unfortunately. I think that the flush days that we were talking about from the pandemic with all the federal money will ultimately dry up and we will have to find more efficient ways to get things done in the future.
Mr. Patoka?
So, thank you, Nielsen. So, I think the key is to be disciplined. There are many jobs out there right now that are well-paying jobs. Will they be well-paying a year from now? Will they be well-paying two years from now when we're hopefully post-pandemic? Right now, it's a supply and demand in terms of the number of jobs that are out there and the number of people that are willing to work, given the great resignation. So, I think the key for the council, although we do have somewhat limited authority in this area, is to stay disciplined and to make sure that we don't do things that are beneficial now but will help hurt us in the future. For example, as we hope that prices will level off and not stay up, you know, we hope that gas doesn't stay up to $5 a gallon and that milk and, you know, there's a lot of things that are beyond our control that impact, that impact our economy, like the cost of wheat and a loaf of bread, that I wish the council did have some ability to have a say in that, but unfortunately, we don't. But in the areas that we do in terms of providing some incentives for buying local, and I think that's the area we need to be working with. And our, again, our Department of.
30 seconds.
Economic Development needs to be more than just a grant-making agency but also an incentive agency to create jobs and jobs that pay a strong living wage and also that form a skill set as well. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Patoka, you will go first this time.
Okay.
The county increased the availability of affordable housing for county residents.
Great question. So, we're living in the tail end, I pray, of the pandemic and I'm a planner by trade and I keep my credentials up, AICP, American Institute of Certified Planners. And to keep your credentials up, you have to have continuing education credits. So, I'm on seminars because I do keep my credentials up with planners across the country. And what planners across the country are saying is that we need to unpack the zoning code because the basic framework of the zoning code is made up of retail that doesn't exist as it used to and it's also made up of office space that doesn't behave as it used to. So, our. So our basic zoning is, has a framework that's outdated. And so we need to unpack that zoning code. And I think that there is a lane for affordable housing as we unpack that zoning code. For example, if let's say a teetering shopping center that's owned commercial is on a transit line and creates opportunities that might be good for affordable housing. As we unpack the zoning code, we'll discover that and revisit the zoning code. What we have to be really careful of is that we do it in a parallel effort while updating our adequate public facilities ordinance. So that
Thirty seconds.
is being done at the same time that the zoning code is being reviewed. And we're doing them in a parallel effort. And so that way, the right hand is talking to the left and we're doing, we're creating affordable housing and also having seats for the students that will be living in those houses. Thank you.
Mr. Fugert?
When, when I was president of the Baltimore County NAACP, I negotiated a housing, affordable housing agreement with the county in cooperation with HUD. And the, the county agreed to put 1,000 units in place of affordable housing. And quite frankly, they failed at that and, and they have not met the challenge. They have not met the goal. I, I'm not even sure if there's been one that has gone in the second district over the past three years. I do know that, that there were two that were, that did not happen. One became a park because it wasn't a high opportunity area that our councilman just spoke about. And the other one was in Pikesville and the councilman voted against it. So I, I understand where they say we're for affordable housing. But the, the actions, we talk the talk, but we don't take the appropriate actions to make it happen. Affordable housing is something that needs to happen in this county. We need to step up to the plate and make it happen and it needs to become a priority. When senior citizen dollars were, were available for housing projects, we were able to put senior citizen housing projects all over the county. And, and we were able to get that done. So I don't see why we can't get affordable housing developments done in our county. And our county council has failed us when it's come to affordable housing in terms of their veto and things that they've done with zoning and preventing zoning from making these types of projects available and making them happen. And that's got to change. And when I'm elected, it will change. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Fugert, you will go first. What is your opinion of expanding the number of county council districts?
I think that expanding, today, the, the district ideal size is 122,000 people. And that's a very large district. And, and I'm in favor of, of creating the additional districts. I'm just concerned with who would draw the lines. As we learned in this last effort for redistricting, that we could not get good, if you would, lines drawn from our existing county council. So I'm concerned about who's drawing the lines at the end of the day. But I believe having smaller districts makes an awful lot of sense. And it's something that we should evaluate and we should consider, given the size of our county and how we're continuing to grow.
Mr. Patoka?
Thank you. So Baltimore County needs to implement election reform. And what I mean by election reform is we need to restructure the way that we set up our redistricting commission. From my viewpoint, the redistricting commission was set up in an ad hoc way, in the kindest way that I could, that I could frame it up. And so we need to look at that redistricting commission. It should contain demographic professionals or members that have a skill set in census analysis, census data analysis. And like I said, the current process seems ad hoc as best. I do support the addition of more council members. I just think that we need to do it with a broader lens to make sure that the whole redistricting process is done in a way that, that is, I guess, that has stronger professionals on that commission. And I think that we could add, add two additional members by 2026. And then as we restructure our election reform, we could consider adding additional members in the 2030 redistricting process.
All right. Mr. Patoka, you will go first. In Baltimore County, a number of communities currently face food deserts as well as thousands of residents who face food insecurity. How will you work to resolve this situation?
Well, thank you for the question. So there are areas in Baltimore County that are, that, that do not have an adequate grocery store. As I've been knocking on doors, one of the key questions I ask is, where do you go to the grocery store? And that helps me figure out how far my constituents are traveling and if we are indeed a food desert. I think that the department, as I said earlier, the Department of Economic and Workforce Development needs to be providing incentives to grocery chains to move into areas that are designated as food deserts. One of my staff members has been recruited by the county executive. She's really excellent at what she does to help solve that problem. There's also this ICSC, this shopping center conference in Las Vegas that a lot of my colleagues go to. I've never been. But from what I hear, I understand there's an opportunity to speak with grocery chains and bring them to Baltimore and Baltimore County and the second district. Now, keep in mind, the second district is changing. And I hope, I hope that I can bring the successes that we've had in the second district currently to the second district come November 2022. So thank you.
Mr. Fugert?
Yes, I, I've been talking with the citizens and, and they do consider it a food desert. And, and it's interesting now that this election season has come up, that, that it has become an issue. But, but people in the Villanova area, which our councilman represents, have been crying for the last three years about it being a food desert. So this is not a new issue. It has not been addressed. I will address that issue and we'll, we'll look at it. You know, there, there's a, there's a revitalization plan for Pikesville that, that was implemented in December where they looked at it. No, no one's done that for the Liberty Road quarter, you know? And, and there are things that can be done that are in place today that were, that, that will, could enable us to do economic development and development efforts along the Liberty Road or western side of the county. And those are the things that we really need to take a look at because I believe that every citizen should have access to fresh fruits and vegetables going forward. And that's something that really needs to be addressed because it seems like grocery stores have pulled out of the entire Liberty Road quarter for some reason. And that needs, that, that trend needs to change. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Fugert, you will go first. How is climate, how is climate change impacting the county? And what can the council do to address the effects?
Well, climate, climate change is a, is a worldwide issue, actually. And, and it affects everyone in different, in different ways. And, and I believe that, that any project or any development should have an environmental component to it and that we should be looking at how we, if you would, bring new projects online in terms of the environment and environmental friendly. We, we also need to look at our transportation and how transportation is working. And can we do that in a more effective way from an environmental standpoint? So the environment is, is very important. The other thing that I learned is that trash bags, the, the plastic bags are problematic. And maybe we need to look at reducing or eliminating those plastic bags and going back to paper, which is something that's more energy and economic for, for, for us to implement. So those are the kind of things that we will look at. Also, in, in home improvements, we need to consider, you know, that, that we can do energy efficient in terms of home improvements. One of the things that I want people to be able to do is sustain living in their homes for longer, which means that they need to make them more energy efficient. And we need to be educating the people on what they can do to make their homes more energy efficient. So it's, it's an issue. It's something that we should be addressing. I think that there's a lot of education that goes into it and, and making sure that the community is aware of how we can do things to, to be
Thirty seconds. All right. Mr. Fugert, you will go first.
Did I address the climate change question?
Oh, I'm sorry. I did that the other night too. Yes, definitely. Climate change. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I believe we can affect climate change at the local level and particularly as a county council member. We have, as I mentioned earlier, we have broad land use authority. And during the comprehensive zoning map process, there are proposals. Applicants will come in with proposals that create more additional impervious surface. And when you create additional impervious surface, you create change in flows of water and velocity of water. And, you know, this is what happened in Eloquent City. And so in the zoning, comprehensive zoning map process, I proactively downzoned over 220 acres as a proactive measure to protect our environment. We don't have another plan, we don't have a planet B. This is it. So at the local level, we've got to do what we can. Even in terms of the project that Mr. Fugert mentioned earlier, that it wasn't denied because it was affordable housing. It was denied because of the impervious surface that it would create. And we looked at whether it was appropriate for market rate or affordable housing. And the impervious surface that would be created would be devastating to the area.
Thirty seconds.
Also, I will say that there are bills that come before the council, like the wheel abrader contract. I was the only council member, the only one, that voted against the wheel abrader. And the reason I voted against the wheel abrader agreement is because they're the ninth largest polluter as an incinerator in the country. The ninth largest polluter as an incinerator in the country. So I do think that we have great impact at the local level. And the comprehensive zoning map process, we have to make very respectful and thoughtful decisions that side on the side of the environment rather than on the side of the developer. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Patoka, you will go first. What proposals would you offer to, what, what proposals would you offer to improve services for older adult residents?
Well, I'm glad that you mentioned that because when I was at Life Bridge Health, I headed up the HUBS program. And the HUBS program was Housing Upgrades to Benefit Seniors. And our program in the northwest area of Baltimore City and Baltimore County was the highest performing aging in place program in the region. And we in Baltimore County, we have a very similar program as we did at Life Bridge Health, where we provide grants to seniors that are 65 and older and that are at a certain income threshold. And typically, it involves safety measures in the home. There's a social worker that visits the home. And also, while the social worker is looking at some of the physical upgrades that allow you to age in place, that social worker has a certain lens that he or she uses that looks at the entire home to make sure there's, some of the things we heard were hoarding and other things that come from isolation and depression. So I think that, you know, to me, right now, while we, we have a significant higher level of funding, I would steer that funding towards these programs that help our older adults. And especially because Baltimore County and the second district is aging. And so
Thirty seconds.
we need to allow our, our older residents to age in place with, with dignity.
Mr. Fugert?
This is something that we, we can agree on. I believe that, that we do deliver those services in, in our district and in the county. And I, I think that we need to continue to expand delivering those services to the, the senior citizens and people as they age in, in our community. Because we, it, it is very important that we support them, not only for the, the home and the physical home, but all of the additional services, the health services that they need, the medicine and those types of things. And we have to figure out ways to deliver those things going forward. So I think that, that, that we're, we're doing that. I believe that it needs to be expanded and that we need to do more.
All right. Mr. Fugert, you will go first. What are your main concerns for public health services in Baltimore County? How should these concerns be addressed?
Well, I think that, that education is always key. And, and in terms of health service, I think the pandemic taught us a few things. It, it taught us that, that, that there are people that are disenfranchised when it comes to being, to, to the delivery of health services. And that there is an unserved community that need to be addressed. And I think that the pandemic brought that to the forefront and brought that to the surface. So we need to make sure that everyone has the ability to get the services that they need going forward. The other thing that we need to continue to do is we need to continue to educate about the pandemic and about, about COVID and, and it's spreading and how we can prevent it and the things that we can do. So education is, is important there. I believe that those are the things that, that we should address.
Mr. Patoka?
So let me just say that we're really lucky in Baltimore County that we have a really outstanding health officer in Dr. Branch. And not only do we have an outstanding health officer, we also have his second-in-command, Della, is also outstanding. And from a health perspective, they've been doing a lot of things right over the last two years. Baltimore County was recognized for how we responded to the COVID pandemic. And it's because we, we, we married the health professionals, the skill set that they have, with a logistics professional. And the, the person, oddly enough, who set up our logistical, getting people in, getting people out, making sure that everything was done appropriately, was a, a roadie for a rock band because he knew how to get, I think it was Twisted Sister, but I'm not 100%. But I think it was insightful of the county executive to say, the health professionals know how to, how to, how to perform healthcare. But we also need a logistics professional that knows how to get people in and out. Partner that up with having some of the greatest health institutions in the world right here in the Baltimore region.
Thirty seconds.
Like Johns Hopkins Hospital, MedStar, and also top-notch regional hospitals like Life Bridge. I think here in Baltimore County, we've got a pretty good situation going on. And, you know, I'm, I'm going to give credit where credit is due. I think Dr. Branch and his team and the county executive did an outstanding job.
Mr. Patoka, you will go first. How would you help the homeless population in Baltimore County?
Well, that's a good question. And our, our homeless population is, is diverse. And they, they're in commercial areas. We just, we in Baltimore County, we just moved our homelessness program out of the planning department where it did not belong. And we moved it into the housing, the newly formed housing and community development department, which is headed up by someone who's very strong in this area at Terry Hickey. And so we, Terry has created transitional programs to try to transition people that suffer from homelessness. And typically, there are other issues related to homelessness. And Terry Hickey is working to transition those folks into shelters, into placements, and also with some of the social and, and psychological assistance that they need. And so I think we're also really lucky to have a strong professional. As I shared earlier, our health department is very strong. And our newly formed housing and community development department, where our homelessness office is currently reside, is also very strong. So it's a really difficult issue. But I think that we have finally put it in the right agency where they are skilled in addressing homelessness issues, along with, I think some of the social worker skill sets that are going into the police department will also help with that as well. Thank you.
Fugert?
You know, homelessness is something that usually people don't see. And, and, and it really can be a problem. What we should be doing is we should be looking for the best-of-breed of programs and services that are out there in the, the, the community. And, and we should be funding them and growing them so that they can continue to do the good work that they do. So what I would want to do is to identify the best-of-breed programs that work with the homeless and then grow them significantly so that they could address the problem in, in our community. I think that the county does play a role in it. But I think that, that the community service organizations that are out there, that, 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 that is their mission in life is to basically get people homes, to get them into homes and into shelters and into those, those types of considerations that, that we should put our arms around them, we should support them, and we should fund them so that they could do the good work that they do.
Mr. Fugit, you will go first. There has already been one major recent ransomware attack on our county department, on a county department. How do you propose preventing future attacks? And how would you help protect residents' confidential information from a ransomware attack on a county department?
You know, ransomware and, and technology is advancing. And, and it's interesting in that the people who want to do us harm are advancing as fast as the technology is advancing. And what, what we have to do is we need to make sure that we have the right skill set that, that are developing the networks and putting the security procedures in place so that, that they don't get infiltrated. As we've learned, that, that if you leave a little thing open and it's people-dependent, that, that, that things like what happens in the school system can in fact happen. The best thing that we can do is we can educate everyone on what need be done. I know in my current position, we have a weekly or a monthly seminar that, that people have to attend on security, on what you need to do, what you need to look out for. Because education is key in knowing what to look out for so that you don't cause that breach. But also, you have to have the network people in place that know what they're doing to, to prevent these things from happening. And, and that, that's what we have to do.
Mr. Patoka?
So we have to secure our infrastructure in, in multi-layers. We need our Department of Information Technology to secure at the entry level of data. We also need our employees trained frequently on, on protecting from infiltration on their own systems. So I would even suggest that have mandatory training because it does change. And people that are, are good at hacking, if, if we create a, a defense for it, there's a new method for avoiding that defense. There are audibles called at the line of scrimmage, so to speak. And so I think that our employees, and I, I think the Office of Information and Technology does this. They require mandatory trainings periodically. And maybe it should be quarterly or even more frequently, at-your-desk training to, to help train against phishing. Because the, the, one of the most frequent methods for infiltration is phishing. And like I said, it needs to be done at the system level. It needs to be done at the employee level. And I can tell you with the school system and the ransomware-related
Thirty seconds.
An audit before Dr. Williams walked through the door indicated that it was vulnerable. And I don't know that Dr. Williams, you know, the pandemic came as soon as he, he, he walked through the door shortly thereafter. So there was a lot of things for him to address. But I think we need multi-layer checks and multi-levels of redundancy.
All right. Mr. Patoka, you will go first.
Okay.
How would you work to address systemic inequality in Baltimore County?
So I think my answer to that would be to look at what's going on in our inner Beltway neighborhoods and what's going on in neighborhoods that are in the, in the further reaches of, of, of our county. And I think that there's been disinvestment in our inner Beltway neighborhoods. There's been disinvestment in our code enforcement officers. Over the last, over the last 16 years, we went from 40 code enforcement officers to 16 code enforcement officers. We're now shifting back. We've, we're up to, I think, 25 now with the goal to get back to 40. There also has been other levels of disinvestment that has been just unfair to, to inner Beltway communities. Open space is always a challenge for inner Beltway communities. We need to look for those opportunities. Education, we just, and again, I think Cheryl Pastore championed this. We just got CTE for the West Side, which will help with some of the systemic inequalities that have existed on the West Side of the county. And so I think we've got, we've got much work ahead of us. But we are making progress.
Mr. Fugit?
You know, first, we have to admit to ourselves that inequities exist and, and that they really do exist. And, and where we tend to not want to address them are in the financial area. You know, one of the things that we talked about earlier that the council does is they approve contracts. And, and I wonder how many times they say, are there minority businesses that are involved? Are there minority businesses that could get these contracts? Can we set aside contracts for minority businesses? And, and I believe it starts with, with the economic development piece, that, that minority businesses need to play a more important role in our local government in terms of the contracting opportunities that are out there. And once we open our doors there, okay, and we start with the economics, there, there's that trickle-down effect that everyone else will grow and will prosper when we do that. But until we get to the dollars and cents and the inequities there that are being spent, and I'm sure that the, the dollars that are being spent with minority businesses are very, very low compared to Baltimore City and the surrounding areas, that we can do much better there and improve how we're dealing with minority businesses. And I believe that that is the key to looking at our inequities that are in Baltimore County.
All right. Mr. Fugit, you will go first. What steps would you propose to increase tourism in Baltimore County?
Nielsen, I think you skipped a question for Mr. Patoka.
No, he, no, he just.
Mike, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Did I?
I'm happy to add more to my answer.
What?
That's good. Sorry to interrupt you. I, I, I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's okay. Let's go to the next. Now I've lost track of who's going first.
I, I believe that I was going to answer the question on tourism.
What steps would you propose to increase tourism in Baltimore County?
Well, the, 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 the thing that you have to look at are attractions and what brings people to an area for, for tourism. And you, you either have to have a destination or you have to have certain things that people want to view and take a look at. And then you have to have a way to, to, a place to put them. And, and, and I believe that you have to put all of these pieces together if you want to bring tourism into the Baltimore County area. The city, for example, you know, they, they, they have conventions that come in. They have a convention center. We, we, we unfortunately don't have that size of a center. We, we could bring that type of event if you were to Baltimore County. But we, we can look at our, our history and, and say that, that we could advertise that and have people come to visit our history. But that's an area that, that I would have to really research to see what would be the best ways to bring tourism to, to Baltimore County.
Mr. Patoka?
Well, I think we've got great opportunities for tourism right here in the second district. So for example, the Pikesville Armory can not only be a local amenity, but it can be a regional destination place if we do it the right way. We also have the Lake Roland Nature Trails. And Lake Roland is a great opportunity to walk the trails and to, to engage with nature. Secondarily, we have, I think, opportunities that we don't really consider opportunities. And that is in the second district, we have two transit lines. We have the metro and we have the light rail. And to me, they are great opportunities to move people to places. And people can be tourists through transit. I will say that we could have had a more robust transit system had Governor Hogan not killed the red line. Unfortunately, when he killed the red line, that not only hurt the east and west side of Baltimore County and Baltimore City, it hurt our entire region, not for five years or 10 years, but for a generation. That $950 million he gave back won't come back. But that would have tied so nicely into the metro, light rail, future activities at the Pikesville Armory. What's going on right now today with some outstanding volunteers.
Thirty seconds.
Lake Roland Nature Center. I think that we, we do have tourism opportunities. We just have to capitalize on it. And we have to stay vigilant. Like I said, for the Pikesville Armory, we didn't have two dimes to rub together three years ago. Now we have 8.8 million. We've got money slated for Paul's Farm to create not tourism, but local amenities for the neighborhoods that are here. And we'll continue to do that in the second term. Thanks.
Mr. Patoka, you will go first. How would you propose to improve the water and sewer services in Baltimore County?
Well, that's a huge monumental task. And I'll talk about it on two levels. One is we've got an undersized, what keeps me up at night is an undersized sewer interceptor under Lake Roland. And there are three pipes that go into that sewer interceptor. And that sewer interceptor, according to a study done by an engineering firm, is not adequate. It's undersized for the amount of sewage coming into it. At some point, we're going to have to bite the bullet and correct that. New water lines are coming in inside the urban rural demarcation line. But the billing is really awful. And so my staff has been really aggressive and helpful to many, many, many constituents that get outrageous water bills. You know, we, we've had somebody that would get up to $10,000 or $20,000 in a water bill that's normally 100. And my staff is vigilant and unweaving that tangle with Baltimore City to make sure that the water billing is appropriate. But our infrastructure is aging. And especially inside the urban rural demarcation line. And the, the pipes,
Thirty seconds.
The water and sewer inside the Beltway are aging. And in some cases, we have combined sewer and stormwater. But it, it's a huge monumental problem. And it's something that we have to work regionally with. And I am supportive of a regional water authority, not just Baltimore City handling the situation itself, but Baltimore City and Baltimore County being part of that water authority.
Mr. Fugit?
I agree that, that, that the, the, the areas around the Beltway and the city line out are aging and are going to be problematic as it relates to sewer and, and water. And that's something that we're going to have to take a look at and that, that we're going to have to address going forward. But the other thing that we have to look at is smart growth in terms of how we're going to grow and what we're going to do going forward to put, if you would, additional pressure on the systems that are in place today. So one of the considerations should be sewer and, and water use for any major development that, that happens in the second district. And that's something that we need to look at. But, but clearly, it's something that will have to be addressed, given the aging of, of the pipes that are in the system. I know in my neighborhood, we've had a problem with water for, for quite a while. So it, there are issues that are around that, that need to be addressed. And that's something that we're going to have to continue to look at and work with as we age, as the county, the, the homes age closer to the city line.
All right. We are out of time for the formal Q and A portion of the program and will now move to the candidate's closing statement. Mr. Patoka, you will make the first statement, followed by Mr. Fugit.
Thank you again to the NAACP of Randalls Town and the League of Women Voters and everybody that's attended this forum tonight for participating. So what do we expect from our elected leaders? I think our elected leaders should be there for us, especially in times of crisis. They should be boots on the ground, not watching from the sidelines. During the past two years, we simultaneously experienced multi-crisis events. A health crisis, an economic crisis, a hunger crisis, an educational crisis, and a misinformation crisis. My office organized, partnered, and engaged with seven faith-based organizations to distribute tens of thousands of boxes of food to people, our residents, that were in need. We were in the trenches. Additionally, my office provided information on proper protocols to battle COVID-19. And we became the trusted source of information for even folks that lived outside of the second district. And these efforts were recognized by many organizations. They recognized that I was present and not on the sidelines. And that's why I've been endorsed by the Teachers Association of Baltimore County, the Education Support Professionals of Baltimore County, the Baltimore County Professional Firefighters Association,
Thirty seconds.
the Baltimore County Federation of Public Employees, the Sierra Club Maryland Chapter, the Central Baltimore Democratic Club, the Northern Baltimore Democratic Club, the Baltimore County Progressive Democrats Club, Preferred Candidate by Moms Demand Action, the Metropolitan Baltimore AFL-CIO, the Labor International Unions of North America, the Mid-Atlantic Pipe Trades, the Plumbers and Steamfitters, CASA in Action, and Air Revolution. And that's why I asked for your vote in my reelection. Thank you.
Mr. Fugit?
I would also like to extend the thank you to the Legal Women Voters in Baltimore County and the Ball, and the Randalls Town branch of the NAACP for holding this event. When elected, okay, my plan is to represent all of the citizens in the second district. And my job would be to do the job that I'm elected to do. You see, some people have ambition and they want to be county exec and they raise a lot of money. And they actually put up signs that say that they're going to be the next county exec. And they're going around the county and doing certain things. What I want to do is I want to focus on what is happening in the second district and in the second district only and do that well and do that full-time. I want to be able to increase home values. I think that, that we should improve the quality of life for all the citizens in Baltimore County. I don't have any money from developers, unlike my opponent. He talks about open space, but there's not a developer that doesn't like and hasn't donated. And I'm not sure that any of that funds have been returned. I will represent the entire district. I will represent you. I've done that for the past 40 years. I've been a leader. I have leadership capability. I look forward to being chair of the council in my first term, unlike my opponent. And I believe that I'm the right person at the right time to serve in the second district. The most important thing that we can do now is get out and vote. You know, voter turnout in the primaries tend to be very, very light. You know, I looked at the numbers in 2018 and 27% of the black folks and 39% of the white folks voted. You know, the primary for the county council position is like the general election. And we need to make sure that everyone gets out and votes. And we have an opportunity to make history and elect the first black person in the history of Baltimore County to the second councilmatic district. So please consider that when you vote, Tony Fugit. Thank you very much for having me this evening.
Thank you, audience members, for your questions and participating in tonight's program. Thank you to our candidates for participating in the forum and serving as an example of civil discourse. You've given Baltimore County residents a great deal to think about as we vote in July. I would like to thank our forum I would like to thank our forum committee for arranging this event and the League of Women Voters of Baltimore County and the NAACP of Randalls Town for co-sponsoring the forum. In the next few days, recordings of this forum will be available on the League's website and on the vote411.org site. Primary Election Day is July 19, 2022. Early voting begins July 7, and all voting ends on July 19 at 9:00 p.m. Vote 411 is the League of Women Voters' free online voter's guide, your one-stop shopping site for everything about your local ballot, candidate positions in their own words, polling places, and more. Hard copies of the League of Women Voters' guides will be available soon at branches of the Baltimore County Public Library, senior centers, Head Start centers, and college campuses. We hope that you will consider joining or donating to the League of Women Voters of Baltimore County and the Randalls Town NAACP to support our work. Thank you for coming and good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.